They've responded. And so we're in contact with them nearly daily. We are in contact with the Long Beach City Parks. Daily Gabriel. With Gabriel. We are in contact and we just had a meeting with District 38, which has the five Little Leagues in our district. Daily. We are in contact with Little League International. Communications and of course, we know that they canceled the international tournament. But even with that, they're giving us guidelines on resumption checklist if the possibilities worked that we'd be able to restart. And we are in contact with our councilmen for for different district. I just talked to Daryl Suppanaw last night and actually invited him to be a guest for this meeting. But they have a big city council meeting tomorrow night. Then I'm talking to the other Long Beach, West Long Beach Liquid Village Presidents, just just to see if. Make sure we're not missing something in our approach in our planning to either plan to move forward or plan if we're not able to. That's where our communication basically comes from. It's 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 a full time job. But we want to have our finger on the pulse and have the best information to relay to you and 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 to make our plans. Now reopening reopening really is the possibilities of reopening restarting is based off a couple of things. Basically, the first one is where the state goes, we go. What I mean by that. Everybody mute their mute their phone or their device, please. We it's across the board with all different seven people we're talking to. They basically say where the state goes, we go. Meaning that for us to have the chance to or the option to restart, it really starts with our governor. Our our governor. Our mayor are pretty much locked at the hip and the state and local health health officials are locked at the hip. That would be the first step phase of allowing us to get back to baseball. The second thing. Is the city, Long Beach City Parks District. Right now Stern Field, the permits are pulled. So until they feel that they got the clearance, that the proper safety measures are in order. Then they would they would re grant the permits to us. I could stop, let's stop right there just for a second, see if anybody has any questions about that process before we get into. Really some of the checklist we're doing, the steps to just see what the possibilities of restarting could look like. Is there any questions?
By the way, I can't see everybody simultaneously, you know, at times like this. Feel free to unmute your own audio, jump in and let Steve try and manage it from there or throw something up on the chat screen. Try and facilitate things that way.
Hey Steve, this is Rush.
How's it going? Good, good. How are you doing bud?
Good, good man. My only question is, do we have a drop dead date of if we don't know something by this date then. Or you know, the seasons for sure are canceled. Have we determined?
I'll I'll give you the quick version of that. Right now we don't and the reason some do and some don't is. Because a lot of folks don't have their own facilities. So if they don't get the chance to start playing by late June, July. Their permits expired and if if there was any youth sports to start, the the fall ball youth sports take up that field. So I'll get in more of the timeline and it's a great question, totally anticipated that. But at this point, there's no, there's no real reason to make a drop dead date because we have. Basically to the end of the year and I'll explain that to get in baseball if we. Under the right conditions. Did that answer your question?
Thanks.
So. So the first step in the resumption checklist checklist that we got from this. You know, we actually started this process before Little League posted a checklist on what to do and and really it was just executive board and. Certain key members of the board that are experienced guys or people even off the board that although not maybe not have been this situation. You know, what what would you do? And and to play baseball, you need the parents, you need the kids. So that's why we reached out just to take the temperature. Of where people are at. We we anticipated. There'll be some people that I don't care what they say, I'm ready. Then we felt that there's some people that already made a decision as a family that for various reasons. Maybe there's people at risk in their family around their family, maybe just because we've all had to stay home 64 days so far. That once we get. Once we're allowed to go somewhere and do something, that's what we're gonna do. You know, that kind of thing. And a lot of people where we all, a lot of us probably are is hey. I'd like to play baseball, but I'd like to learn more, you know, I want to know what that would look like. So that we took the temperature of that. I don't know, Eric, are you on the phone? And I'd like to share some of that. If you're not, I kind of got some of that.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, all right, just maybe give us maybe a by division or Cliff Notes version of what that what our feedback has been so far.
Okay, so. I re I reached out to all the VPs of the divisions and starting with challenger. Out of their 30 participants, they had. 20 that were yes, and then they had about five maybes and about five noes. T-ball, it seemed like T-ball was kind of a resounding no just because of the. The ability to control the kids and keep them at a safe distance. You know, I think the the coaches and possibly the parents felt like that wasn't gonna work. Farm, we had. Two teams, I think, that could field that had enough players that said yes, that we could field the team and then we had. You know, probably about if we were to four teams that had about half and half. Moving to minor, minor A and minor B mirrored themselves. Both divisions have 10 teams, four teams had enough yeses to field their teams again. And then we had four teams that were half and half. And then we had two teams that. Had. You know, one or two yeses and then a lot of noes or no responses. And then majors, we had five of the six teams had enough. Players. Willing to come back. To field five teams. And then upper division, I think. Mike said that they had about 15 guys ready to go. But that's a smaller division.
Okay. You know, that probably generates some questions right there and you know, what do you do when you got a half teams and that sort of thing? You know, there's obviously option with pool players. If Paige you there? Maybe just throw out a couple of the thoughts that you have if you're if you're available on, you know, what we do in in terms of. You know, the player, the teams that want to move ahead, the coach want to move ahead, wants to move ahead, but we have four or five players not on there or. Or when there's a team that, you know, is just right on the cusp, but you know, nine. Everyone's missing that day.
Yeah, so the kids, the teams that had, you know, eight. Or less, you know, we'll try to look at at each, you know, case by case scenario. But one option is to combine teams out the gate. If there's four from one team and five from another or six or, you know, vice versa. We can probably easily make that adjustment. Of course, we want to try to keep it balanced and fair. We'll we'll have to look at that. But Little League International, so the governing body that sends stuff down to the, you know, district level and then it comes and disseminates information to us. Has released a whole bunch of new rules and waivers as it pertains to this obviously unprecedented event. One of those is that 12 year olds are eligible through December 31st of this year is able to be playing age 12. So they haven't, you know, technically aged out for those of you that are parents of 12 year olds. Another thing is that we have the ability to move kids from specific divisions. So if there is a playing age nine who could play in both the minor B or minor A division, we're able to move and fluctuate that kid as a pool player. Or move them permanently onto a team of eight, say, to make them carry nine or 10. Same thing with the majors division, you could put a 10, 11 year old that's played down in minor A up in majors if it. Meant filling out a roster spot. So there's tons of different scenarios and options. That's kind of secondary, I feel like to what. The issue at hand is right now, but I I feel very confident that we'd be able to fill out rosters as is and have kids have a really meaningful baseball season. If we continued going forward with, you know, the bulk of our participation for our league.
Excellent, excellent. Any specific questions to that with for Paige?
Hey Steve, Sharon had a question about any thoughts of keeping the teams together for fall ball?
Yeah, we'll get to that. You know, it really depends on the timing of. Whether we'll have fall ball, you know, fall. Fall may be spring and spring is bigger than normally fall. And as we go through this and as time goes on, you know, we'll have to, we're gonna obviously keep in communication, just see what the pulse of folks are. As as we possible of the possibilities of slipping spring into fall.
And another question about uniforms and what we might do if we were going to be combining teams.
Yeah, you know, that's the that's the fun part of it, you know, there's a. There there might be the banana slugs might, there might be five or six banana slugs. And five or six cow poly mustangs, the the slug stings. So that's that's a possibility when the teams are just totally split like that.
Go pop, go Cal Bears.
You know, I think the most important important thing is right now is the next part is, you know, we we're in the process. And we've been going developing our amendment to our safety plan to meet the state local health guidelines. And and beyond, you know, you know, they're gonna give us. There if we get the opportunity to play, they're gonna give us guidelines and we can, we can all. Guess what those might be, but you know, we we will not move forward until we have a fully developed safety plan. Approved by the district and the local health officials. Bill Marshall, who's our safety director and has been involved this league for over 30 years, you know, is heading that up. So we have a subcommittee that we developed of board members. And we were seeking folks. That are want to participate and these are the, I would guess, the folks that are on this phone call to want that want to participate. And help develop that plan to we'll we'll give you the contact for Bill Marshall. Reach out to Bill and indicate if you want to be involved with that. You know, just so you know, I'll give you some examples and it's obviously not limited to this, but you know, we wrote a letter. Three weeks ago and really we went to the the safety directors, the boards. And the presidents of the three little leagues in Long Beach and developed. A a letter together and talking about the type of things that we were looking at, if not specifically stated in the. Health guidelines, you know, just how we'd handle hand washing stations, you know, at every dugout. You know, sanitation and and making sure we have every inning sanitation and hand washing stations for every kid, player, coach. Umpires. Umpiring position and this is, you know, not in concrete, but most likely will be behind the pitcher. Social distancing rather than behind the catcher, you know, no shared equipment between the players. Physical distancing in the dugout, which may may end up being actually the bleachers. Then any space remaining that we might have in the bleachers will have. Spots marked of where folks can sit. Families that are a one common family could sit together without the social distancing. Of course, we got to come up with protocols on how to. How to. Manage that. The physical distancing again for the fans. Spreading out through the field around the field, even if we got to use some of the outfield. We have. You know, there's been questions right now about, you know, how we handle. The the wearing face coverings. And there's options about having those not in the field, wearing those kids in the dugout, people in the stands. Possibilities of having them or not having them in the field. But for sure, those around in the surrounding area, you know, unless those are. One of the items that were moved from the CDC and health official guidelines. Then if those are still part of the conditions, then that'd be part of the plan. Those are just few examples of things that were in our plan. We're developing that further, so I encourage anybody who wants to be part of that to get with Bill Marshall. The next thing, you know, we wanted to see where we were with the umpires. You know, need the players, need the parents to take the players to the field. We need umpires. Positive feedback on the on the umpires that wanted to. You know, all of them want to return. Again, understanding that we're gonna have self safe and health conditions outlined in our safety plan. You know, we've we've talked about what could it be? You know, we could it be June 1st, 1st, could it be June 15th, would it be June 30th? So Mr. Marshall's on the line and he's our scheduling guru. And I think he actually enjoys just making schedules. And I think he's about developed every scenario we can think of, but John Jonathan, you have anything you want to share with the group?
Only muting can stop me. Anyways, no, the realities are is whatever curveball they want to throw us as far as a start date, if we are able to start. We'll make the schedule work accordingly. Obviously, a confirmation on the number of teams will be important to put together a schedule first and foremost, so. Know what you're know what I'm gonna have to be dealing with and stuff, but anyways, yeah, whatever whatever is thrown my way. We'll certainly make it happen for the good of the organization, but it's obviously all of this comes with a big if, so.
Yeah, and from a timing standpoint, let's say whenever go time is. There's been discussions of, yeah, we're gonna have one week, you know, to practice reunite with your players. The the recommended amount of time is two weeks. So we'll probably lean towards that depending on what the backend, you know, is, you know, you got to begin with the end in mind. So when we know what we're up against and the timing of how much time we have to assemble a. A regular season, the balance of a regular season and then decisions on what we're doing beyond that. But if you're if you're wondering about that, most likely it's gonna be two weeks to to get all the. Coaches to reunite with their reunite with their players, some kids have been practicing, you know, with their folks and. And families and some haven't, you know, we just don't want to have an additional safety risk by just jumping into something too quick. Snack Shack.
Steve, a quick question about all the fields being in use simultaneously or?
Yeah, the plan right now would be using using them simultaneously. Games would be scheduled. Separate and meaning, you know, 30 minutes, 40 minutes between games so we can have, so there there wouldn't. Be the same thing where you finish a game and you hang out the field all day, you'd finish, you'd leave and then new teams come in. We don't have that quite worked out, but we know we want to minimize the. The bottleneck scenario.
And if I may, I'd like to let everybody know that the upgrades for the camera is supposed to be completed this weekend and. Can I tell you that the company is putting a lot more bells and whistles onto the live viewing of the games? So should this happen, you know, if not this year, next year, the live streaming for all games at Buckle and Murphy at least. Will be will be going strong. So, you know, this might even give us the impetus to start streaming fields at.
Hey Rob, what kinds of bells and whistles?
I can't get into that right now. It will be a it's pretty cool looking. They're definitely cool looking.
Yeah, and that's something that for for everybody that's on the phone and I would have missed that one, we we have the luxury of that. We're the only team in our district that has that, one of the few ones that have lights and one of the few ones that have permanent fields. So we're we have a little bit more control of this than than than. High 80% of Little Leagues, you know, for if at risk. Folks within your family, loved ones, you know, we can watch it from the luxury of your home, their home. And I know, I know everybody wants to watch their. Their their child play in live and I get it. So but we do have those options to minimize the crowds and the social distancing and our fields. That's Denise. Snack Shack. That. That's an option. Not a priority, but the discussions we had last week with. With. With our auxiliary group. You know, would be ability to, you know, get drinks out. Packaged foods, no hot food, no fountain drinks. Working underneath the guidelines of. Restaurants. Of how we handle money, how we distribute product. I I would probably say that a bunch, most folks won't really want to work the snack shacks. We know that. We'll have to manage a plan where we have key individuals on a continuous basis. So the hours could be less, but we we'd like to be able to safely execute. Distributing, you know, drinks. In the, you know, consume food at the games. Field maintenance, you know, we have under the permit that's been pulled, we we have been allowed to continue with general field maintenance. So we have Seth, Aaron. Aaron Peterson. Aaron, I don't know if you're on, you want to talk about that at all and, you know, what it'd take to get it. And in the resource we need to get it to playing condition. Maybe he's not on the line. So I know he and Seth have been working on this. You know, we we got, the fields look great. They do, they need to be trimmed a little bit around the infield. Kind of haircut, clean up, if you will, like a lot of us. So but they're in good condition and they've been working on those, so we're in good shape there. Practice period before starting, you know, probably looking at two weeks. At first we were thinking one, it just it's not enough. And depending on how much. Notice we get and I don't know how much we will. If we got 30 days notice that we're for sure starting a day, we'll be right. Maybe it's one week of practice, but I I think we're, I don't think we'll get a ton of notice. And of course, we've talked about one of the key parts is our restart is our safety and compliance committee. Which again, I encourage any of you guys want to participate, jump in on that. So next part, what what does that look like? You know, different scenarios, we we'd like to get going as soon as we could. We understand that if youth sports are a go. In California, the later we start, we're gonna start penetrating into different sports. People like to play FNL soccer. Will soccer go? A lot of the soccers fields are on. A school, that's one concern. If if we get a go. FNL will get a go because that's in Orange County, so you anticipate that. There'll be folks that want to, may want to do baseball and and football and soccer, some may want to just. Focus on those fall sports. So we understand that the scenario could change the deeper we get through the summer and the fall. Our our idea and we talked to the district is, you know, they asked us, what about TOC, what about district? We want to get as much baseball in within our own community first. We we will understand our own health guidelines. And and at that point, we'll feel comfortable with the way we're doing our business. And to jump around and start thinking about that, it's probably a little bit out of reach until we got better information. So we want to get as much Long Beach Little League baseball in as possible. So if there's a choice between our in-house tournament, which. We've we've took a poll and overwhelmingly the people love our tournament, you know, the the bragging rights of winning major minor B, minor A. And so if anything's gonna go away, it's gonna be the district and the TOC tournaments. Then of course, the possibilities. Of All-Stars. And that'd be a nicety. You know, in terms of selects. There are options on the table. That districts are talking about of doing a 12 year old, which is a 10 to 12 state tournament. We don't have the international tournament, but for those kids that have played baseball for eight years in this league. You know, the dream of playing as far as you can go in a 12 year old All-Star tournament is there. It's a reality. If it can be done safely, we'd like to provide that opportunity. And it could be a Southern California only tournament, much like it look exactly like what we had our fields for the 10 year olds. Southern California State Tournament last year, then the winner of that would play the North. So those are options. That could happen. Again, depends on a lot of information, but. You know, we we have our own fields, we. Which ties into Rush's question, what is really the deadline? There really isn't a deadline right now. It's just gonna be. Our client, I always tell people our general memberships are client. We don't have baseball without general membership. And it's gonna be feedback that we get from people. If you want to play baseball, we'll have the ability to play baseball. Any questions at at this point? So the the question I probably get a lot of maybe 30 a day. Refunds and I I understand that, you know, I I understand the challenges of this difficult in. Time economically, socially. And we want to address that. We don't want to just jump into it. We we feel like. The next couple of weeks is a key time in better understanding what the possibilities of baseball are. And just tomorrow night. Mayor Garcia is going to address his position on youth sports. He really hasn't addressed it, you know, it's in. You know, it's in phase three, it's phase four. We're being told that he's going to come out with communication tomorrow to give us a little more definitive outlook on what that would be. And I will just say this, the right thing will be done. I just, you got to know that there's a lot of upfront costs to running the league that have been spent. And just in general, you know, there's almost ninety thousand dollars been spent this year. Charter fees, uniforms, you know, equipment, things like that. Some of that can be moved, whatever, but if you divide that by five hundred, it's a hundred and seventy-five bucks per player. And so there'll be something, if we didn't have this year, there'll be something, certainly. But to what degree, I can't really tell you right now. Those that have already worked the snack shack both shifts are getting their checks. If you're not able to work the snack shack and do your shifts, likely scenario that each person would get their snack shack refund. Beyond that, I just can't address that right now, but I'd be glad to share it with you. I'm glad to hear your individual opinions and feedback on that offline. You know, y'all have my email address, but I just don't think it's a good time to debate that right now. In options, you know, like any business, honestly, you know, when you get credit, it's usually a store credit for a lot of reasons. They want you to come back, they want you to play fall ball, they want you to play spring. So that would be the first option, you know, a store credit, a credit towards your next league. And of course, the twelve-year-olds don't have the option. So that'd be a different scenario depending on what happens there. Any, anything on that? Okay, next thing, I want to turn this over to some important milestones and deliverable here soon. Per our constitution, we have the board of directors voting. And people express their interest in voting, I mean, in being part of that board, which is, you know, I just, it's been a great experience for me. I never thought I'd be in this position. When I first took on the T-ball team and Bill Marshall, who's on the line right there we're looking at, was the president of the league when we won our World Series, back-to-back World Series. So it is an honor. And I think I've told you guys that in many communications. But, you know, I just started by being a little, you know, T-ball coach and jumped on the board and took a position as the T-ball VP. Then I took a position of being the Farm VP. Then I was the Minor B VP for a couple of years. So it's been a really great experience for me and very rewarding. So with that, Eric, I want to tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, so Rob had shared the screen momentarily, but on last Friday, the fifteenth, I sent out an email to the entire Long Beach Little League family, you know, encouraging you to become a member of the board. We have about twenty or so positions. I haven't counted them exactly, but we got about twenty positions. There's several, several, you know, board members from this past year are, you know, throwing their names in to run for the same position. And these are all elected positions. They, all positions can be contested. So, you know, just because there's a name there, you know, doesn't mean that you can't put your name there. You would go into a vote, you know, runoff election. But we do have, as of today, four open spots. So if you are looking to join the board, this would be a great, you know, opportunity for you. We've got uniform manager position available. We've got fall ball coordinator. We have auxiliary member-at-large, and then we have the information officer. And so we, this year, we do have about six new members, you know, six new general membership, you know, members that have, you know, requested to, you know, throw their name in the hat, which is great. You know, we're, we encourage everybody to get involved. I got involved. This will be my second year. This is my second year on the board. You know, I started with my son in Farm as a seven-year-old. You know, thought I had some ideas to help make the league better. Got on the board and kind of, you know, we've got a good group of people. And I think right now the board is, you know, last year's board, we have people that are very focused and kind of, we're all leaning in the same direction. So, you know, we could use more new blood. I've tried to encourage as many people that I know that, you know, would be good for the board to join. But if you're interested, send me an email. If you have a question about any of those positions, send me an email or talk to, you know, any board member that you might know. It's a great way to get involved in the league. If you're not ready to do a board position, we do have committees that could use your help. Auxiliary is always looking for, you know, general membership to help out during opening day, closing day. And then I have the Building and Grounds Committee. We're the ones that sell merchandise and, you know, make those cool t-shirts that Klaus is wearing. We're all, we always need volunteers to help with the fundraisers that we do. So if you just want to be a general member, go ahead and, general volunteer, go ahead and send me an email and I'll, I'll put you down in that specific slot. Right now, I think I've had two people request, you know, that have told me that they're interested and that they'll help out. So, any questions on that?
Yeah, once again, you know, just because there's a name there, feel free to jump in there if that's something you want to do. And maybe we'll move some people around and, you know, maybe that's a position that we'll just need to vote on. But it's very rewarding, so I encourage you guys to get involved. Next on the agenda, if there's no questions, just, I put a little section on, there's been some communications from Auxiliary. We had raised some money through pizza drives and different things where we wanted to give back. And we bought some masks and maybe some essential needs. And Erica Medina put out some emails to the general membership. Erica, you happen to be on the line?
Yes.
Okay, maybe we can talk about that and the logistics with those giving back and those essential needs.
Okay, so, you know, face masks and hand sanitizers are a new way of life for us now. And the league purchased some face masks, hand sanitizer, also some other essential needs in the way of paper goods, baby wipes. We have sent out an email, I want to say, I think this Saturday would be two weeks ago, if anyone is in need or could use it or know of someone in the league who can have a need for those items, just email us and we can find a way to get it to you through safe distancing. We also had tried to send out communication to, we do still have some food left in the snack shack that we're not going to use. So if you or you know of a family who is in need, again, please contact. We would really love to get that out to where it can be used. So again, we have face masks, we have hand sanitizer, some paper goods, baby wipes. Please reach out. I know we are all in the same boat. I know people say, well, some of us aren't all in the same boat, but we are all going through this together and we all have the new way of life. So please, just send to me an email. And we'll figure out a way to get you what you need.
What's your email?
Rob, what's my email? I'm sorry. I think it's auxiliary-chair.
It's on the website.
Okay, great. Thank you, Erica. You know, a lot of other questions we got, I know, that was about the pitchers and team sponsor acknowledgements or recognition. So you should have been, each of you should have been, the coaches should have reached out to you. We just, well, maybe not yet. The vice presidents of each league have the pitchers now, and they have reached out to your coaches and to responsibly and safely get those pitchers to you. So your coaches should have those pitchers. If you, if you haven't got them or if you haven't heard from somebody in the next, the last, in the next few days, go ahead and get ahold of me. But the pitchers are out, and I see a box of minor B ones sitting right here at Klaus's house. Corporate sponsors, that, you know, there's been some questions on, you know, how we'll handle corporate sponsors. And of course, the signs are up. We've been on our website and through other communications, trying to get as much participation in supporting our local businesses, all our local businesses here in Long Beach, let alone just, you know, our corporate sponsors. And Demi Hayward has sent out some communications on that. Demi, I don't know if you're on, if you want to add anything to that?
Demi is not on the call.
Okay. So I've pretty much covered what we've been talking about. There's a lot of information out there. We try to put something out every week or so, or when there's a significant, you know, piece of information, we'll post on the website or we'll get a communication out. Right now, you know, all we really know is our permits are suspended till May 31st. My opinion, I expect it to go beyond that, and they'll do them right before that to June 15th. But as we all stay tuned over the next few days, on new information developments, you know, where other counties start releasing things, I think, you know, Orange County, you can anticipate, will always be a little bit before LA County. So with that, I'll open this up to any, any questions that maybe we didn't cover, something that you're wondering about.
Grab some veggies right here, bud.
Okay, I'll make you one, okay? All right.
Okay, I was going to unmute everybody without telling everybody.
Yeah, Steve, Bill Marshall. I have a few things on, that I just wanted to touch base with real quick on the safety program. I did go on the internet and started to research some of the states that are opening up throughout the country that may get opened before us and kind of, just to get a kind of an idea of what they're looking at. And I think most of what you already touched on is, is, you know, that you brought up. And I'm sure Bob mentioned it at the district meeting, but you know, in our district, we have three cities. So Long Beach may be doing something different than Lakewood, and Lakewood may be doing something different than Bellflower. So that might be something that might affect this if we were to do TOC or do any kind of interleague play. But just something to think about, maybe it won't even happen. But some of the things that were brought up as far as for the safety, we're going to schedule games. I know a lot of the leagues have put in time limits, drop deads, mercy rules, time limits in order to end the game, clear the field and get new, and get new teams in so they can get as many games as possible. The other night, I had a nice conversation with Joe O'Neil, and he gave me a website to a ultraviolet light that disinfects items. So there's talk about how many baseballs do we have ready for a game? Six, one per inning? Do we have twelve, two per inning, one on each side? So there might be something there that we might look into. I think there are like fifty-nine dollars, sixty dollars. Buy a couple of them, wouldn't be that expensive, but the ultraviolet lights to put the balls in and have them sanitized, things like that. And you're probably only going to need, and again, I'm only guessing, because I saw that Long Beach Pony just decided to do in their season. So you're going to have a glut of umpires around looking for jobs. So I don't know if you're really going to need two-man umpires for any games. You're pretty much going to be behind the pitcher. And so I don't know if you're going to need another umpire. That might be a league decision. That might be something that's decided on later. And the outfield signs, we're probably going to have to be shifted and moved or just folded up so that we can offer access to outfield seating for parents and, you know, and whoever, just spectators. And on just a personal side, I think that dropping the TOC and the Invitational Tournament and playing as much as we can in-house and doing our own in-house tournament at the end, a double elimination, I think, I have always enjoyed that. I thought that was awesome. And if anything were to happen on this stage, whether they have district All-Stars or not, and I know I'm going to get a little feedback from people on this one, but I think we should at least, if anything, pick a twelve-year-old All-Star team and at least purchase hats for them for their twelve-year-old season. And, oh, Joe O'Neil thinks we should just start right away. He said, to heck with practice, everybody's in the same boat. Let's just go. So I totally might throw that in. Other than that, that's all I got. Call me, email me if you're interested. There's a lot of other things. Oh, I did get, out of the state of Ohio, they're not going to have any umpire meeting or any exchange of anything. The managers are going to exchange through an email their lineup. So there won't be any trading of any kind of paper or any reason to have any kind of a home plate discussion. So there's just some things that are coming up all over. So I'm trying to stay abreast, some of the contacts I have over the years, the people throughout the country that I can tap into, just to see if maybe they're doing something that might be, you know, might work for us. Other than that, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. And Joe does have a lot of great ideas, and that's what we're wanting from everybody is just bring us your ideas. Rob, what's Bill's email address for the league?
Safety@lbll.org. I'll put it up on the chat site, too. Safety@lbll.org. It's another question before we get going now. What about sponsor, team sponsor money? Well, any chance that they'll get their money back or?
Yeah, there's, it's something we're looking at. Again, it really depends on what the season remaining looks like. You know, we had that on, you know, it really falls in the same category is refunds. you know, we had that on, you know, it's, it's, it really falls in the same category, uh, is, um, refunds. So, once we know more about the visibility of what our remaining season looks like, then we can address that.
Thank you.
Um, feel free, you know, um, you know, I've left my cell number, my email address and a lot of people, uh, if you don't want to do it within this forum uh, on this platform, uh, feel free to get, get ahold of me on any questions you have. I, I really do try hard to respond to everybody, uh, timely. Uh, I am still working. Um, but I, um, I look at the stuff daily and want to give you guys timely responses. The, uh, okay?
Sorry. Uh, I was just going to go back really quick because I'm, I have, Missy couldn't be on the meeting. Um, but no, on, on the question, no team sponsorship checks were deposited. So I don't think it did yet. We'll see if we just don't cash them, I think, is, is what we're asking. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you. And I, I, I think that was, uh, addressed with Sean and I, I don't think it can make it tonight. So that's, that's good info.
Oh, he's there. He's there.
Okay, okay. Um, any other questions?
Drive in.
My own.
Jonathan's own.
Hello?
Hello?
This is Daniel Hackney, Tubman's dad. So I just want to say, uh, as an overview to all this, look, I know we all love, uh, our kids. We love baseball and we love Long Beach. And we want to see Long Beach Little League Baseball come back. Uh, I spent 30 years with the city of LA, including advising two mayors of Los Angeles. I just want to caution everyone in this group, let's err on the side of caution. You know why pro sports and college sports are driven to come back? Billions of dollars at stake. We do not have billions of dollars at stake. We have lives at stake. So I don't know how we play baseball where everybody touches a ball. Okay, every single person touches the ball. You talk about the families are going to be spread in the outfield. So I just advise, like I would advise the mayor of Los Angeles, let's not be driven to risk too much to drive the season back. You're talking about June. Let's get back in June. Let's get back in July. What if we just wait until this plays out? This all seems wildly premature to me. Until the powers that be tell us that it's safe for our kids to go on a ball field, there's not billions of dollars at stake, just lives. So that's my commentary.
No, thank you. Thanks, Sad. And I've had, there's, there's a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, folks that are aligned with you that have given us some feedback and we're, we're looking at all that. You know, we wouldn't do something unless we're comfortable with how we're doing it. And we, we really do need a lot of help from different people, feedback from professionals on this. And maybe a little bit of people there before us and lessons learned. Um, I don't think we'll be on the front end of it, but the other people doing it before we do. And hopefully we can get some of those lessons learned and, and give us the information to make good decisions. Thank you.
Sure.
Yep, appreciate that. Anybody else? Well, I, um, something that we really wanted to do, guys, um, the executive board, the board of directors, you know, we tried to, uh, I'm probably tired of seeing my communications and, uh, with everything moving so fast, we wanted to, we wanted to do this. Uh, and I, I'm really digging these Zoom events. So I, I try to do one every night now. Now, I, I, it's a good, it's a good forum to share communication and get more of a personal touch into, uh, what we're looking at as a community in Long Beach, Little League.
Uh, Steve, I did record most of this. I'll probably see what I can do on depth about just posting it on the website and make sure I get together with Jonathan about any notes that might be there. And, uh, yeah, appreciate it.
I would have shaved if I knew that. All right, um, so with that, um, again, any questions can go, you go on our website to ask any of the board members questions. Certainly, uh, uh, go ahead and ask me anything you need. Uh, I will, uh, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'm moving. Make a motion.
To adjourn the meeting.
All right, all in favor. All right.
Hi.
Uh, be, be safe, be healthy and take care of your family and loved ones.
Joe Blunt needs a pool player.
Good night, guys.
Nice job.
Thanks, everyone.
Everybody be well.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, any reason I should keep this open?
Nope.
Uh, all right.
All right.
We'll, uh, follow up with an email to the, uh, league. And, uh, like I said, I'll post a copy of this online at some point.
Hey, Scott Royal's still on. Remember that, Eric? He's, he's never left.
This time he muted his video, so we don't know. He's not paying attention.
That's funny. Oh, good night, everybody.
Good seeing you guys.